Welcome, everybody. We're going to call the order. Grand Forks City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavami.
Yeah.
Sandy.
And Veen.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. All right, item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. I'm going to start with, we're obviously missing our President and Vice President today. We were just over at the visitation, and Sandy passed away just before Christmas, so the visitation and the funeral were today, so those two members will be at the City Council. President and Vice President will be over at the funeral, so they won't be here today, but just want to give my condolences, getting to meet with some of her brothers and some family there, and they're taking it in stride, but, you know, definitely talking about some of the history and the past, it's, you know, it's family, it's hard that you, these type of moments, that's what it takes to get people together, so just want to send them our prayers and our wishes. I want to thank the Lions Club and Claire Zernelt specifically for inviting me out, they worked the booth out at the Christmas in the park, so I was happy to be there and get to chat with those guys for a couple hours and see quite a few cars go through. On Thursday, the 29th, want to thank Lieutenant Dwight Love for getting myself and Trish Alonsky and Ms. Osowski as well out on the Greenway. We did a run to kind of get an idea of, you know, scope and to see what kind of situation was out there, and we're still waiting to get out on our cross-country skis as well, but we got a chance to get out there and check out the Greenway, so want to thank them for that, and just looking forward to 2023, so thank you, everybody. That's all I've got for Mayor's Announcements, so move on to two, citizen comments.
Allison Spicer.
Ms. Spicer, please.
North 18th Street, Grand Forks, North Dakota. I'll just keep it short and sweet tonight. Just a reminder to all of you sitting up here, the truth doesn't mind being questioned, but lies don't like to be challenged, do they? Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Spicer.
Sheila Spicer.
Todd, you want to see, are we able to hear? You can tap that, or maybe?
John, can you hear back there? Yep, everything's good, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Spicer, please.
Sheila Spicer, Grand Forks. I am reading something, it's not from me, I just got this a few minutes ago, and it is from Sean Bucleire, to you guys. Foo-fang intelligent, due diligence. Greetings, Mayor Podolski, Councilmember, City Administrator, and Attorney. Senator Kramer and Hoven have received updated classified and confidential security briefings from the Department of Defense, United States Air Force, related to the national security Foo-fang possesses to America and specifically the Grand Forks Air Base. Since this briefing has the mayor, councilmember, or anyone in the Grand Forks City government reached out to their offices for an update on this matter? Yes or no?
No, we haven't, we didn't expect you this week, thank you.
Okay, why or why not? What did you learn? Sean wants to know what you learned.
We're going to have meetings this week, so I would...
Okay, then we will know?
If we've learned something, we'll definitely share it, yep, thank you.
All right, since this briefing, have you contacted the DOD USAF Director of USAF National Security? I'm trying to skip through here. Mr. Blue Badge, this is the same Blue Badge who has appeared in this council chambers related to Foo-fang NSRIS. Thus, Mr. Blue Badge would be an excellent contact for the mayor, councilmember, or the Grand Forks government officials for additional clarification related to Foo-fang and national security threat to Grand Forks since a CFIUS non-jurisdiction review. Yes or no? Why or why not? What did you learn? That's going to be later. Did UA USAF NS Department confirm or counter what Senator Kramer or Hoven said relative to the Foo-fang NSG, Grand Forks Air Base threat? Yes or no? Why or why not? What did you learn? I, along with members of the Grand Forks community for the past 12 months, have brought valid fact-checked concerns about Foo-fang becoming part of the Grand Forks community to the council, both at the meeting and hundreds in emails. The council and Grand Forks government not helpful, but instead actively ignoring, I believe it is Grand Forks citizens and it's Grand Forks Air Base's best interest to have transparency, accountability, and credibility on the above questions. Thus, I look forward to hearing answers to these questions during the Foo-fang project update. Thank you. And it was concerned citizens, and it was from Sean Bucleire. He wants to know what's going on. Mr. Blue Badge, we all know him, you may need to go get to know him and find out what's going on, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Spicer.
That's not the order they were put in the box. Let's do it the way it's supposed to be done. You pulled this before. Okay, take them in order, please.
Mr. Spicer, we've got five minutes if you'd like to speak, sir. Would you like to speak during your five minutes, sir?
I will speak when the right time comes up, but my card was supposed to be pulled up. Sherry? That's not very...
Mr. Spicer, if you'd like to speak, now is your chance, sir.
Pardon me?
Now is your chance if you'd like to speak, sir.
That's the way you run this place, isn't it, Bochensky? You wonder why everybody is discussing with the City Council and you.
There, can you hear me? I'll repeat that.
Go ahead, Mr. Spicer, please.
Your reputation with this city is just fading as fast as anybody I've ever seen. You do not represent us at Grand Forks at all. You are a complete embarrassment to this city, you and most of the members on this City Council. Okay, so on this morning's interview, you stated that Foo-fang was a great new development project for Grand Forks, would bring in millions of dollars, tax dollars, but only after 20 years, okay, to lower our taxes. What about the tax dollars and the revenue we'll lose when our Air Force Base, our drones, our new mission leaves, and also many businesses close because you brought this Communist China company to Grand Forks? I don't think Foo-fang's going to last 20 years because they're building it with used parts. And Mr. Tudorash, who's I'm glad to see here tonight, nice to have you aboard, good to see you again. Appreciate you coming. Only problem is, we don't get to speak to him or have him answer any questions, so it really doesn't any good that he's here. So, with those used parts, this plant will not last four or five years. It's an engineering nightmare besides. Everybody knows that. We've been jumping through hoops for them since this project started. You have done nothing for the citizens of Grand Forks because you have a lawyer who seems to think that the City Council takes care of business the way they want to and not the way the citizens do. You have to be reminded every week that you work for us, we don't work for you. You are jeopardizing this town with this project. We want a better community, one to be proud of, not one with the Communist Chinese factory polluting, abusing, taking our resources, and then ruining our town. If we can't get this plant shut down, we will take other means by recalls and whatever else we have to do, starting new petitions if we need to.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer.
Jody Carlson.
Thank you. I do have one question for Mr. Tudorash, if I may ask it, please. In one of the initial meetings, he indicated that Foo-fang had zero connection to China. Is that still correct? Thank you for that answer. This paperwork, the information that, just a minute, the information that they're going to cover tonight is included in all this. This is the Foo-fang update. Anything that has Exhibit 3.2.3 on it that is not completed at this point is a breach of the Development Agreement. All items from that particular exhibit will due 90 days from the effective date of the Development Agreement, which was 2/22/22. And if I have any time before I'm done with this, I will also share with you the information on how the city and the county are spending over $10 million of funds, of ARPA funds, for illegal use for Foo-fang infrastructure, but we'll get into that later. And April of 2020 is when talks began regarding, talking about Foo-fang, talking with state entities, et cetera. And I'll share these dates with anybody that wants them. On November 8th of '21, there was a new districting, amongst the council of the whole, they held a, quote, "special" city council meeting to do a redistricting of the city. Again, this was a special meeting, so I would always say whenever there is a special meeting that is held, a special city council meeting that is held along with the committee of the whole meeting, that should be a red flag for all of us because there is always something suspicious to come of that. On 11/15/21, you introduced Foo-fang at the City Council. On 11/22/21, you then approved the redistricting, which, by the way, included all of the land that is now being annexed, and being that there was probably a lot of people, myself included, that did not pay attention to that and catch on to that, good for you guys, good job, you slid that one right by us. The Development Agreement then was approved and was effective on February 22nd of '22. The land sale took place on April 28th of '22, and one of the things Mr. Bochensky and Mr. Gostad, please know that microphones, they work very well at that time, so when Mr. Spicer stood up here and asked you, "Has the land been sold?", and you said, "What should I say to him?", and Gostad says, "Tell him you don't know." And if you think that wasn't heard, we heard it, so more lies. On 5/16 of '22, the particular property that Foo-fang purchased was rezoned from agriculture to industrial. Keep in mind, the land had not yet been annexed. The land was then annexed on 6/6/22. What happened is, and for you people that are listening to the council livestream, what happened is that the city gathered all of the acreage, including the land that was purchased by Foo-fang, which was 370 acres, plus the acreage of the business. They made deals with anybody who might be able to have impact with the land purchase in being able to protest the annexation, so with those deals and with the amount of land that Foo-fang purchased, it was not even a possibility to come up with 25% of the land that the people were able to protest. Shame on you. All annexed land is to be contiguous with the city limits, and I would like to know how you avoided that one, because when I look at the maps that you have provided, there are about three islands that are created, including Corinta's land. I don't understand how you can get around the laws, both the city laws, the city code, as well as the state laws, that you seem to continue to weasel your way around. One of the things that I was going to do tonight is I had developed a paper, it's a book I'm writing, and it's called "The Lies the City Council Has Told Us", and I really wanted to be able to share that with you tonight, but since something came up today and some other things that I wanted to talk about, as far as the dates and how the land sale has went and how it was interestingly rezoned and then annexed, and so when we look at purchase of agricultural land versus industrial, you made that one there, Mr. Tudorash. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson.
Dennis Kapek.
Hello, thank you for the time, and I do hope somebody will listen, at least, you know, right here. By law, the parent company has to give the data of the American workers to the government of China. I didn't write that, somebody else did, but I've seen it written many, many times. You know, this council, I haven't seen much production out of it. What you do is keep throwing our taxpayer money away. You don't care where you seem to throw it. You know, your latest prospect with the Bitcoin mining has kind of gone downhill. What, are you going to reuse a facility for turkey barns? Because you're not making any money off the Bitcoin, and you're taking the banks with you, just like I told you months ago. You guys continue to do this with everything you do. Red River Bio, where's that at? It's been closed down for a year now. How much tax base are we getting off that one? Same thing, the Chinese are pulling the lid over your eyes again with this Foo-fang. If the thing would ever get done, we're going to lose 400 workers in this area and gain 200. That's quite the benefit, ain't it? And you know, if you do the fat math, the state is putting $35 million in this, the break-even point won't even be a decade down the road, and the only thing you're going to be developing is roads and infrastructure for an entity. And you sit here and you pledge allegiance to a flag and to the republic for which it stands, you people need to learn what a republic is, because you are not trying to push a republic here, you're trying to push communism. 75% of Americans are against China's communism. Learn, 75%. So basically, you people are the minority in this room right now. You know, if it wouldn't be for the benefit that you bring in other questionable people, you wouldn't even be that far, but name something you've done to the benefit. You know, there's a whole row of pictures out there, mayors, and I could take people out there, take you for a ride around the city and show you what those mayors have done for this city, besides throw money away. What has this city done? What are we getting out of Red River Bio? How much tax base are we deriving from that? And the truth of the matter is, this cornmill would be shut down before the 20 years was up, but what they plan on doing, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, they plan on bringing in 200 CCP, because they're not going to find people here to go to work. I mean, you can't even get people for $18 an hour at a fast food restaurant. So I think the writing's on the wall, you guys all been told this, and I'll repeat it, you know, if you haven't heard, but, you know, you didn't get the red light from CFIUS, but by no way, no means did you get a green light. And you know, everything you've done to this point and continue to do is dig yourself a bigger hole, and you keep digging and keep making it bigger and bigger. And I'll tell you what, at this point, I shake the dust off my feet with you people. You know, you boys are driving yourself into your own situation here, and you think you're in charge? You're going to find out you're not in charge. There's a lot of other people out in charge, but they're sitting by letting you guys dig a bigger hole, and they're just amused at watching you every week that you sit and you'll dig yourself a bigger hole and you actually think you're on top of things. You are not. You never have been, and you never will be, and it's too bad that you were allowed this much time in this city, because all you've done, and the taxpayers are starting to learn how much money you guys have wasted and thrown away. Tell me one credible deal you have done, and there again, Red River Bio. How much tax base are we getting from that? You know, there was a whole street paved there for the cost of how much, but it don't cost you guys, not because you're spending our money. Every time you hire an attorney, it's our money, our money, the taxpayers. And the taxpayers, I'll tell you what, take a survey around town, you know, go dance on the radio, Mr. Mayo, that's fine, but go around, talk to people, see what the people really say. Mr. Spicer ain't far from wrong with what he states, you know? Things have really turned, and you guys have turned it yourself. It's with your attitude, your belligerence, and the way you conduct yourself, the way you treat others, and then you expect somebody to treat you with any respect? You treat absolutely nobody with respect. And Sherry, boy, you got quite the job there. I'm really, really proud of you, and I'm sure our Lord is proud of you, because if our Lord come down here and told you to stop this, you still wouldn't.
Thank you, Mr. Cadillac.
Margaret Jackson.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, I wanted to say a few words about the Greenway. When people ask me, "What's the best thing about living in Grand Forks?", or "What do I like to do in Grand Forks?", I always say something about the Greenway, and I want to tell you why, how I've enjoyed the Greenway, and why I think it is one of the best features of Grand Forks for Grand Forks residents, and I want to express my concerns about anything that would add to the number of snowmobiles that enter into and ride around the Greenway. So first thing, when I think about the Greenway, and I was looking at some old pictures, I've lived and used the Greenway for 20 years, or as long as it's been in existence, and what I see in my pictures to jog my memories are children, are pictures of strapping my son before he could walk into a backpack and putting him on my husband's back to go cross-country skiing on the Greenway, to go snowshoeing on the Greenway. And we're not super great at it, we're not super fast or agile, we might sometimes slip. We're certainly not in a good situation to be maneuvering quickly to get out of the way of any motorized vehicles, and it even has given us trouble when the snowmobiles that still ride on the Greenway and have this entire 20 years despite not being supposed to be on there, they get over into the tracks of cross-country ski, and those of us who aren't so speedy or maneuverable tend to slip when that happens, it wrecks the trails. So children, then when they can walk, and I saw a lot of pictures of sending out my seven or eight-year-olds and their friends on skis, because you can get those for free, you can borrow them, and having them go around on the trails, and then maybe I might walk home and say, "I'll be back in a little while and bring you some hot chocolate", and had a few occasions where I was super concerned and actually made calls, because as I was going back to my house, walking, and my kids and their friends were out there trying to learn how to cross-country ski, or just play in the snow on the Greenway, and snowmobiles would be, you know, cruising around at what seemed like dangerous speeds to me as a parent. These are the things I worry about. So children, being able to send your kids out, yeah, go over on the Greenway and sled before dinner, and it's getting dark, right? These are reasons why I'm concerned about any plan that would add to the number of snowmobiles and the access that snowmobiles have as motorized vehicles in the Greenway in a way that's been different from the past. Also, I wanted to add something to my thought about, my memory, actually, of sending my kids out there and allowing them to go out together to go sledding or something, as it's getting dark, which it does at about 4:35 in the winter. I also would meet friends when there would be a really bright moon and go cross-country skiing by moonlight. I've done that more than once, and enjoyed being out in the dark in a beautiful serene jewel of a feature that we have right here in Grand Forks, and I'm afraid we're going to lose if anything changes to add to the snowmobiles and motorized vehicles in the Greenway. All right, so children, I'm very concerned about the children that could possibly be injured by the speed at which snowmobiles are able to travel. Now, I understand that the plan, if there is a plan, would have a speed limit, but I'm really concerned about enforcement. It's my understanding, and it has been my experience, that you really don't get any enforcement on the speed limit, or even folks who are riding those vehicles in places where they're not supposed to be presently. So you can call the police, and I have done that many times, the non-emergency number, but really, there's not much they can do. I mean, I can't even be mad at them because the snowmobile is now gone, and I have no way to gauge speed, but I think speed is an issue. I think noise is a really big issue. The Greenway is a very serene place to do a lot of different things that people like to do in this lovely environment. It's wrecked by noise, and I've seen some, I haven't looked at this myself, but I've seen some folks who write about the, just looking at the amount of noise, the decimal level, decibel level that snowmobiles make is above the ordinance that we currently have. I know from living nearby that it sounds terrible, and it really does affect the neighborhood when you hear these noises. Also, cost, I don't know what damage potentially would be done to the land and the paved areas if snowmobiles are out there on them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Jim Whitehead.
Mr. Whitehead, please. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, citizens. Happy New Year, everybody. I just made a New Year's resolution. I resolved to listen more carefully, to speak more respectfully, and do anything I can to try and reduce polarization whenever topics come up for argument, so I'll try and put that into action starting now. Some of you wondering if I sound funny, that's because I'm not originally from this area. I used to live in England, but I've been here a long time. Five and a half years ago, I retired after 30 years as professor at UND, lived around here since 1988, and I remember well the flood, and I remember going to city council meetings right after the flood, and one of the issues came up in repairing the community was, "Shall we have a Greenway or shall we not?", and a lot of members of the council of that time expressed worries about the resources they would need to develop a Greenway and the cost. I stood up and made the point that there would be a cost either way. If the Greenway wasn't developed, if it was left as a derelict area, there would be all sorts of costs with the activities, the social costs of underage drinking, drug use, all sorts of things going down there, and on the other hand, yes, there would be a cost if you developed it into an asset. And I summed it up by saying I thought the choice was whether the area between the dykes would be the stinking armpit of Grand Forks, or whether it would be its smiling, shining face. Fortunately, it became the latter, and it's a wonderful asset to the city. I don't use it as much as I used to, I live outside of East Grand Forks now, I still occasionally come in and walk. I used to be an avid cross-country skier. I'm a little too orthopedically challenged to do much of that anymore, unfortunately, and I've watched with interest some of the arguments and the debate, and I can see both sides, and in line with my resolution, I'm going to try and speak to that, but first of all, though, a simple point, it's a Greenway, not a motorway. But I recognize snowmobiles enjoy their recreation, they want to get from one end of the city to the other, and I'd like to see them accommodated, if it's possible, but it's difficult to allow unrestricted snowmobile use or any motorized vehicle use in a Greenway and still have it as a Greenway. And I heard the arguments about, "We pay taxes too, you know, therefore we should be allowed to use it." Well, I pay taxes that go towards the library, and I like loud music, but I'm not going to advocate they have a rock band in the library every day, that would, it would no longer be a library. I enjoy trap shooting as an activity I can do without wrecking my arthritic joints anymore. I'm not going to advocate we do it in the Greenway, it would no longer be a Greenway. But to the snowmobile issue, in a nutshell, I think the main part of the problem is what I'll call rogue snowmobiles, who I'm sure are not members of the Grand Forks Snowmobile Club, and who, from what I could see, are honorable people who just want to be able to get a snowmobile route, but they create havoc. I have seen it multiple times. I've never had a cross-country skier come at me at 60 miles an hour and veer off at the last second, and put me in fear of my life that he's going to kill me. A snowmobile has. I've never had a birder trash, seen a birder trash the trails, I've seen snowmobiles do it multiple times. I've never seen a snowshoeer wait until the luminary lights are put out for the moonlit ski, and then go down the rows and trash them all and disappear before anybody can catch them, I've seen a snowmobile do it. Nobody wants to see that happen, that brings disrepute to everybody. What I'm wondering is if both sides could get together and actually talk and listen to each other, rather than talk about each other, and even more sadly say, you know, accuse the other side of corruption and all sorts of things, I think it's time... I think it's time people stopped doing that. That doesn't help anybody. I'd like to see them get together, and maybe the snowmobilers could help stop the rogues. Maybe the snowshoeing, Greenway community could found them at least some way to accommodate them, if maybe they would support ordinances that would reduce the noise, you know, have a muffler, have identification on snowmobiles, because there's no way you can identify who it is if there was an audience that put a big ID number on them. A lot of the problems would stop, I think. So, that's why I'm inviting. I assume that noise was my time's up. I don't think I have a pacemaker or anything, so I'm not about to die. So, I would be delighted to be a part of that. The Greenway is a health and wellness jewel in the crown of Grand Forks, and I hope it's able to continue. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Jane Croker.
Ms. Croker, please.
Good evening. And I want to thank you for the service that you provide to our community. And I hope we can have a conversation in a respectful manner where we can listen to each other. And I preach, I very much appreciate the opportunity to share my views. I was out snowshoeing on the Greenway this afternoon with a friend. It was delightful. We ran into a birdwatcher who said he had brought some people from Williston who were, wanted to see the barred owl that's living down there. Also saw several fat bikers while I was out. And to me, it's really been a joy to be able to use the Greenway. I feel like it's such an asset to our community. It has a wonderful reputation. And in any conversation that I've had with people about what they really like about Grand Forks and take pride in, the Greenway comes up. And I think it is challenging to find this balance between people who want a quiet, peaceful place and need that. It's healthy and helpful for us, for our emotional, physical, spiritual health, to be able to be within nature and have a quiet place. And so, I hope that you will consider that as you're sorting through this process. I also want to address the way this has become polarized, and there have been accusations levied that have been very unfair. I've been a part of the Greenway Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee since its beginning. And I have seen the city staff act in respectful ways and bend over backwards to accommodate a variety of different user groups over the years. I cross-country ski, snowshoe, birdwatch, and walk. And we used to have a double track for cross-country skiing, which is really fun, because you can cross-country ski next to someone else. But then, we wanted, there were people who wanted to fat bike, that wanted to snowshoe, that wanted to skate ski, and so on. So, things have evolved. And people wanted frisbee golf in the wintertime. And I didn't know that was something, a thing, until they came and said, "Well, we want to do this, too." So, we are able to have the conversation, then, about, "Well, could you at least not walk in the track? Because it's kind of hard when you cross-country ski after somebody's walked in the track." I also don't want to demonize snowmobilers. Before I died, my husband was a snowmobiler, and my sons enjoyed that sport. And I think there are ways to accommodate snowmobilers without destroying the peaceful, natural environment of the Greenway. I hope that you'll uphold the ordinance that does not allow motor vehicles on the Greenway. And I really am concerned that it become a thoroughfare, a noisy thoroughfare, which is counter to everything that I hold dear about that beautiful place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Croker.
Pat Wilber.
Hi, I'm Pat Wilber. I live on Chestnut Street. Thanks for having me this evening. I guess I want to address two things about the proposal to allow snowmobiles on the Greenway. The first one deals with governance. I was shocked to find out that all summer long, someone had told snowmobilers in our community that they had access to a trail and could prepare it and put signs on it. Most of the community had no knowledge of this. So, I'm very concerned about who's governing the Greenway and who's making the decisions. I'm not going to repeat what everyone said. You all know it's a gem. We love it. Most of us have been using it for 20 years as a Greenway, not as a Speedway or a thoroughfare. And I'm very concerned that East Grand Forks, Grand Forks, people, all the constituents who are concerned about this have adequate notice as to what's going on. I know the technical committee sent out a survey. I have children who live right on the dike in a home. I don't know what they did with their survey. They didn't know it. They didn't know it until three or four weeks later when I mentioned it to them. People in the community did not know this was happening. And that's not the way we operate here. So, I think it's very important that a group of constituents are contacted and notified. The Herald has taken up information about the Greenway. I might say it's quite biased. I can't believe as a birdwatcher that I have been kind of stigmatized. But, I mean, I think it's very important that all the constituents who are concerned about keeping the Greenway as a Greenway are notified as to what's happening. I think you have a big part of the population that doesn't know. Okay? And I think that's important. The second thing I want to bring up, without repeating what everybody else has said, there are, I can think of five groups that regularly use the Greenway in the winter. So, you have walkers. Lots with dogs, some without dogs. You have the cross-country skiers and the snowshoeers. My group is the birders. The new group are the fat tire bikers. I live on Chestnut. I'm seeing them, different people, going into the entrance of the Greenway on a regular basis now. Jane just mentioned that she saw them this afternoon. So, you have five groups that are using the Greenway, and using it without interfering with each other, quite frankly. And now, we have one group, and I'm not anti-snowmobile. I've owned snowmobiles. I've ridden snowmobiles. I love the activity. I'm a bit old now to be doing it, but I really enjoy it. Okay? So, I'm not anti-snowmobile. But we have a skinny, narrow strip of land. I don't know how you can possibly conceive of having a snowmobile trail adjacent, directly adjacent to a cross-country ski trail and maintain the whole philosophy of what the Greenway was. I went out to the Minnesota site to see what are the parks doing over there. And it might be a good idea for other people to look at it, too. Itasca has snowmobile trails all around the perimeter of the park. 31 miles. Nothing, no motorized vehicles are allowed inside the park. And I looked at the Bemidji State Park, which, of course, is similar to the Greenway, because their trails go around the lake. Again, narrow usage. They have three miles of cross-country ski trail that hook onto, I don't think it's the Heartland up there, but one of their big snowmobile runs. So, they, too, have banned motorized vehicles around the lakeside where the skiers and the snowshoeers are. So, I'm very concerned that you bring the groups together that can make some good decisions. I don't know how you resolve putting snowmobiles on that narrow strip of land. But perhaps there's land north and south that can be addressed so that snowmobiles have a place to go. I know they're trying to get out of the wind. I appreciate that. You know, you get down low by the river. It's better trails. But I don't see how it fits on our Greenway. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I thought that did go. John Garkey.
Mr. Garkey, please.
Hello, everybody. Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas to everybody on the city council. I appreciate the professor's comments earlier about a tone of respectful civility. I live on, just on the edge of Ward Three and Ward Four. And here at the beginning, so the people who agree with me can perk up, and the people who disagree with me can tune me out, I'm also speaking to oppose the inclusion of snowmobiles on the Greenway. And I'm doing so for four particular reasons. My children, Joseph, Edith, Lucy, and Monica. Monica is only nine weeks old, so she is not yet a Greenway user. However, the other three have gone sledding out there. And it was actually last year when we were out sledding on the Greenway in late December. My son was four at the time. My daughter was three. And they were just starting to take their first sleds solo down the hill. And right as I was about to send my daughter down the hill, she was just gathering up enough courage to go solo, we heard that unmistakable scream of a two-cylinder or two-stroke engine, and a snowmobile crested the hill right at the corner of 13th and Belmont, gave a little rev, and began his descent down the hill where over 40 children were sledding. For that reason, among others, I don't think allowing any snowmobiles under the Greenway is a good thing. Obviously, there's a mismatch of speed, size, and power. As the professor alluded to earlier, if I'm struck by a snowmobile, or God forbid, my children are struck by a snowmobile, what enforcement mechanism could there possibly be to keep that snowmobile present until enforcement arrives? And how long will it take for law enforcement to arrive? How long would it feel? Especially if it's a hurt child? Now, my history includes a time where I taught high school. And the snowmobile clubs made the argument that, "Well, we want to help the problem of errant snowmobilers, so if you just let us on the Greenway with rules and speed limits and a clear demarcation, that will solve the problem. That will keep, help us, you know, get rid of the errant snowmobilers." That logic, I don't think, holds up to reality. When I was a high school teacher, the debate at the high school between the administration and the students and the faculty was a senior prank. The seniors let it be known, "We want to have a senior prank." And the argument was, "Well, the administration and the teachers should cooperate with the senior prank, letting him into the school, having supervision, et cetera, so that we could keep it under control." That seems to be the same argument going on here. You want, you don't like 60 mile an hour snowmobiles on the Greenway? Let's have some regulations and laws so we can control it. The same administration that greenlit that senior prank spent the day after the senior prank calling freshman girls' parents to explain why unraveled condoms had been left in their daughters' lockers. Did every single senior do that? No. But a few bad actors took advantage of the new leniency in order to take their transgressions further. And this isn't just limited to high school students. Have you ever been on a road that says they has a 35 mile an hour speed limit? And then, whatever city or county changes the speed limit to 40, because everyone's already going 40? No one stays going 40, now they go 45. I do that. It's human nature to overstep the existing rules just a little bit. And we already know there's a problem. There were 41 instances in the last three years of snowmobiles going on the Greenway. Now, the Herald article noted that in East Grand Forks, snowmobiles are already allowed on the roads, roads that presumably would lead to downtown. Grand Forks has roads that would lead to downtown. That's the solution I'd be interested in pursuing. What road potentially could serve as a thoroughfare? I think that's the middle ground. Because having a quiet space, as other speakers have noted, is a good thing in and of itself. The Greenway is twice the size of Central Park in New York City, and it should be just as famous for being a beautiful, quiet space. I spend about 250 days a year on the Greenway. I run there in the mornings, winter or summer. And I'd ask you this. The snowmobile club did not ask to be allowed onto the roads in Grand Forks. They asked to be allowed onto the Greenway. And if you want to know why a snowmobiler, or sorry, if you want to know why families don't want snowmobiles on the Greenway, you might ask yourself, "Why don't snowmobilers want to be on a road with cars?" Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all for citizen comments this evening. Number three, awards, presentations. So, we've got a policy that we've got to stick to.
Sir, I know. I had weather, I had road conditions that prevented me from getting here on time to be able to get a slip into the basket. It was literally right after.
Mr. Patrick, I'm sorry. We've got a policy. We're moving on to item three. Thank you. Awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
3.1, Epitome Energy Project Highway 2 I-29, West Industrial Area Update.
Mr. Phelan, please.
Good evening, Mayor Butchinsky and members of city council. We have two updates. We're going to go through the Epitome Energy, and then, we're going to pause with any Q and A, and then, go on to the Fu Fang USA update. To start with, also online is Mr. Egan from Epitome Energy. And so, tonight, I just want to give kind of a highlight of where we're going from here with Epitome Energy. We did provide the briefing and where we're going to move on from here. One of the thoughts that came up, and I know council member Vian is online this evening, but just to give you a broader perspective in this area, in and around Epitome Energy, Mr. Vian suggested that we should take a broader look at not only the Epitome Energy location, but the other things that are going on in and around this industrial area. And so, we took that to heart and are in front of you. And I just want to highlight some of the areas in and around this Highway 2 I-29 west area as we move forward. The Epitome Energy location is otherwise known as this Site Number One, right here, which is located right here. To the north of that is the Northern Plains Rail Service, just to the north of it. As you look at the Epitome Energy site, one of the real advantages in why a lot of these entities like Epitome Energy is going in this direction is the rail accessibility in this area, as you can see with the Northern Plains Railroad. The other thing that came up, and I briefed you when we went over this review, is that the city does own some property. And so, as part of the landfill development, the city did purchase this property right here, which I think is in around 10 acres as part of the landfill. So, when the city cited the landfill, there were adjacent property owners. And so, the city did offer to buy out adjacent properties. So, the city of Grand Forks did this in that 2007, '08 timeframe. There was a lady that came forward regarding this particular property right here, and that's the property. The city did try to acquire that from a different owner back in the day, and we were unable to meet an acceptable solution in that particular area. There is a new owner of that property than the one that we dealt with, you know, 15 years ago. So, this is the property. We did ask, and Mr. Egan can speak for himself, but we did, as part of a meeting with Rye Township, we did suggest that, you know, we wanted to move the site as far as we could from this more densely impacted residential area. And so, that's why they agreed to move it from kind of the center of this land area to the area closer to 70th, knowing that the city also has this property. We did suggest that there is a property owner, that we were unable to acquire their property. And I did follow up with Mr. Egan after the meeting, and he did provide to me that he does have a third-party property that's working with this property owner. They did reach out to the property owner in advance of the announcement, and have reached out further from there. So, there is ongoing conversations. I'll allow Mr. Egan to speak for himself, but we have engaged as part of that. Also want to provide, in this area, but we have engaged as part of that. Also want to provide, in this area, some of the advantages and some of the other areas that are going on. We talk a lot about Northern Plains Nitrogen. So, this is Epitome Energy, right here is number one, Northern Plains Railroad up here. This is the city's solid waste landfill, which is a, is a key entity in this area. So, right now, when we bring you projects, the city's landfill development is, is in this southeast quarter of the section. The landfill is intended to be, to grow north and then to, to grow west. It's meant to be a ninety-year facility, and obviously, we're about fifteen years into that particular facility at this point. This location right here is Northern Plains Nitrogen, and we've, we've talked about that on an ongoing basis. The important part of this particular area right here is this, this line right here is the city's wastewater affluent line. So, when the city's wastewater treatment plant, which is located right here, we can either discharge our wastewater through our existing lagoon facilities, or we have a, we have a pipeline that can, that goes up and then enters this pipeline right here. So, the important part of this is this, this wastewater line here for affluent can serve Northern Plains Nitrogen. It also will serve Epitome Energy to this direction. So, this will be a key asset that we're going to use in this particular area. The other area is this TPNL, which is number, number four right here. And currently, mainly, this is being used by LM Wind Power for wind blades. But it, also, the intended is that it can be a multi-use facility for other use, other than just primarily for wind blades in this particular area. The other entity that, that is going to go to tomorrow's planning and zoning is number nine, which is, we have met with the Simonson family, and they're intending to build a, a business or industrial logistics center right here on, under number nine. That'll be a planning and zoning, and eventually, that will end up at City Council for further review. And so, they see a large opportunity in this area also to build warehousing and other logistical park area. As we, as we talk about this Highway Two corridor, and one of the things that we're going to talk about is the traffic study. We're going to need to do a traffic study because we're going to have to take a look at how it will impact Highway Two. This is Sixty-Ninth Street, which is an improved road to our landfill, and this is Fifty-Fifth, right here. And this will have to get improved as part of it. And obviously, this, this area is impacted by I-29 and Highway Eighty-One, of which we have an exit off there. So, as we move forward, this is the city's English Cooley diversion that goes up this direction and then to, to the Red River. So, and I want to just point out, we're Fu Fang USA. So, Fu Fang USA is generally in the same area, but on the other side of Interstate as we move forward. And really, this is just to highlight all the, as Mr. Vian had talked about, all the city assets that we have in this area that will help really spur industrial development, which is our, our water treatment plant, which is now located on the west side of town, the wastewater treatment plant that's on the west side of town, and then the solid waste landfill. And so, as we work through, not only with Epitome Energy, but with Fu Fang USA, those three assets the city owns and operates are critically important to industrial development. And it's been critically important that we've located them on the west side of the city so that we can better serve industrial growth in our, in our community. Right now, what we're doing is, Mr. Gosted and I, we, we are looking at meeting with Mr. Egan and, and their attorney here in the next week or two. We're going to start going over the development agreement. And we've discussed that many of the, many of the areas of our current development agreement with Fu Fang will be, be very similar to, to that. So, we're going to, we've, we've provided that copy to them, and we're going to start moving through that particular agreement. One of the things that we've talked with Mr. Egan, kind of what their timeframe is, their timeframe is rather aggressive to work through between now and, and to the summer with getting, getting it groundbreaking. I think one of the advantages Epitome Energy has is they've shared their permit application that they've had with the state of Minnesota. And so, a lot of that information is, has already been provided. And so, it's really now shifting some of that similar information to the North Dakota side of the river and working with state agencies in, in North Dakota. So, I think they have an advantage as we move forward, is that they've already gone through an extensive, multi-year process with the state of Minnesota, and now they're going to be moving over to the state of North Dakota and working through the various areas. The two areas that we are administratively going to have task orders, and, and later to this evening, we're going to talk about some of the Fu Fang task orders and where we're at. Number one, we're going to go move forward with, with a traffic study. And so, administratively, we're going to move forward with Bolton and Make in a similar fashion to what we did with Fu Fang USA, is we're going to work with Bolton and Make to come up with a traffic study. We've already got a lot of the information because they've already gone through this with the state of Minnesota. And so, you will see, the first thing that will probably come, likely come back will be the traffic study and some of the traffic impacts and how we're going to manage those, and, and some of the improvements that are going to have to be made, not only in the local streets that are part of the city of Grand Forks' network, but also the state system, whether that's Eighty-One or Highway Two or I-29. So, that, that will come back to you in the next few months. The other thing that we're going to look at are all these city utility infrastructure task orders. So, we're going to try to summarize all those areas, whether it's how are we going to serve them with water in partnering with Agassiz Rural Water, how are we going to serve them with, with wastewater, and then how are we going to do the wastewater reuse? So, you will see, come back to you. We'll move forward with a task order with some of the similar partners from a consulting perspective that we worked with, with Fu Fang USA. We'll come back with a similar strategy of how we, we know best to, to move forward. Once we work through the first month or two with our consultant team and with Epitome Energy, we'll likely be at a point where we'll have a better definitive way forward. And then we will come back as part of the development agreement and ask you to move forward with further task orders in a similar fashion to what we've done, we've done with Fu Fang USA. One of the other things that we haven't done, we have not negotiated a, a payment in lieu of taxes. And so, that's the other thing that we'll work through. And instead of having that, you know, more baked this time than we did with Fu Fang USA, we'll have more engagement as part of that, but we'll work through that with, with them as we move forward. So, with that, administratively, in the next month or two, we're going to work with Mr. Egan and Epitome Energy. And I anticipate in January and February, we'll make some really good progress. And by March, it'll be back in front of you. I think perhaps with planning and zoning items. It will also be in front, back in front of you with a proposed draft development agreement, and with additional task orders that we're going to ask you to approve as part of that particular development agreement. So, with that, maybe, John, we can, we can pull down the slide, and I would ask Mr. Egan just to provide any follow-up from what I just provided as a briefing.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Just to reiterate our commitment to the community and to the process, we look forward to getting a date on the calendar, and we're working through some dates in the next two weeks, as was stated, to start the process on the developers' agreement. I was in Grand Forks yesterday and this morning, and I apologize for not being there tonight. And I'm, I'd be on, on a screen, except I pulled over. I ran into weather down in Twin Cities today, and it's taken my drive a little longer than anticipated. So, I apologize for not being on screen and being there in person. But our commitment is to be engaged and to be at as many council meetings as we can through this process. So, again, there was nothing that I won't need to add. I think everything was covered pretty well.
Mayor Bochensky, that's, that's our kind of all review on that particular. If there's any further questions from the City Council.
Sounds good. Any further questions at this time related to Epitome?
Mayor, one quick question. Mr. Phelan, I'm glad to see you're doing that traffic study. Do you, do you actually see the potential for a, a connection from the North Washington I-29 interchange to come, come to the south on the west side of Interstate?
Mayor Bochensky and Councilmember Vian, well, we have, we haven't talked, spoken specifically with Mr. Bittner, with Bolton and Make. I don't anticipate, based upon the initial numbers, that there'll be major changes, any, any significant changes to the Interstate interchange at all. But again, I'm not the traffic engineer, and, but it seemed like with the numbers that we saw that that wouldn't be impacted. You know, despite the, you know, the design, I think, of that last exit leading Grand Forks is probably not the best. But certainly, as part of the traffic study, we'll be engaging with the North Dakota DOT, and, and if there are some improvements that can be made, we'll certainly push those with the North Dakota DOT.
All right. Any further questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Egan, for being here today, and drive safe.
I appreciate that, Mayor and Council.
Mayor, going back up to, now we're going to go on to Fu Fang, and kind of our, our thought is on number, number one, to have Mr. Gosted go over the checklist. And then, we also have with this evening, Mr. Paul Borsna from Blackin Beach, and he's going to go over items two, three, four, and five, and six, to provide you updates. And then under number seven, city infrastructure progress updates, we have Mr. Gaddy with us in person, and he's going to go over that update. And then, we'll have some conclusion, conclusionary slides at the end, and then take any questions from City Council at this point. So, with that, I'd hand it over to Mr. Gosted, please.
Mr. Gosted, please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. What was attached is the conditions, requirements, task checklist that I had prepared several months ago. One thing I do want to point out, and you'll see it in the upper right-hand corner, your upper-left-hand corner, it says updated seven twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. That was an error. That's what I had done to try to keep track of things, and, and I missed that. The rev date is actually in the bottom right-hand corner of December thirtieth, the twenty-twenty-two. So, this is updated as of last week. What this, this is not new. This was introduced to the Council back on July eighteenth of twenty-twenty-two. In fact, I went back and looked, and, and the video of Mr. Phelan correctly stated that we'd be populating this spreadsheet into the end of the year and into next year. And that's where we're at here today. At that time, back in July, there wasn't much populated within the, within the spreadsheet at all, because we're just starting it. The purpose is, of this spreadsheet is for my tracking purposes and for tracking purposes of city personnel and the consultants of the various conditions and the tasks and things that need to be accomplished under the development agreement. I'll just explain each of the columns so you get an understanding what they are. The section in exhibit just references the particular section or exhibit of the development agreement. The summary of condition requirement task column is just to brief, briefly describe what that particular section entails. Then I actually put in the development agreement language. That either recites the exact language out of the development agreement or references an exhibit. The notes are progress or status of the various items. What I've done over the last several months is, is requested city staff that are working on these particular items, or the city consultants to provide information to me so I can populate the, that data. I, I don't, not involved in every one of these environmental tasks, so I asked the consultants and the city staff to provide that information. Some of it is inserted by me because I was involved in, in the particular task. When it says updated, you'll see that's bolded. That's the date I actually inputted the information. It may not have been the date that the particular matter was completed, but it's the date that I inputted it on the spreadsheet. And it would have been information that I would have received shortly thereafter. So, I would have gotten it maybe on the, on the twenty-eighth and would have inputted it on the twenty-ninth, for example. It doesn't necessarily mean, that task may have, that particular status may have been accomplished before that time, but just so you know it, what that date represents. And then the, the last column, date completed, satisfied, that's the date of a particular matter that has in fact been, been completed. And so, for example, if you take a look, it's section eight point one, point two zero. There's a reference to the relocation agreement that exists with Agassiz Pipeline. We entered into that agreement. That's part of the process. That task has been completed. The, the pipeline has been moved. And Rural Water, they're still providing Rural Water service. We just needed to move a pipe. So, that's, that's an example. With respect to this project, and I want to reference section three point two point three, subsection A, where it talks about that this is, and understandably so, this is a complex project. And, and it will, and it, and it is a complex, and it was contemplated to be an iterative process throughout. And I, and I'm aware of the technical people, the city staff, the consultants, and Fu Fang representatives getting together on a bi-weekly basis, where there is preliminary or additional information that's being provided by Fu Fang that's being gathered and provided, working, there are...
Excuse me, ma'am. We're having trouble hearing, please.
There are working drafts that are being provided, all, that don't necessarily meet the requirements for a particular formal review by city staff at this point, but allows them to continue to engage with Fu Fang to make further inquiries and further review of the project as it proceeds forward. In addition, there are weekly meetings by city staff and city consultants to discuss the, the progress of the particular project. So, again, this, this spreadsheet is a tool to be used to track these things, track the development agreement, track the terms of the development agreement, and we'll continue to do that. I would expect that we would update this not every week, but probably every two months or quarterly, so you're, you're understanding where things are at. In addition, I understand that there'll be things coming forward to the City Council. I won't necessarily provide an update on those things as you approve those matters, but just to kind of give you a heads up as to how often you'll see this, this spreadsheet going forward. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the task list.
Any questions for Council? Mr. Weber, please.
And you've already drawn our attention to it.
You've already drawn our attention to it. Exhibit three point two point three, notes one, two, and three. And, and I don't know if, if you can answer this, Mr. Gosted, or if we need someone from AE to us. The, the water flows, the expected flows of water, is it six point six? That's the number that I think we've been using, but it also mentions seven point two here. And there's also discussion about a Fu Fang constructing a reservoir to avoid peak water consumption. Can, can that be addressed?
Sure. I think when Mr. Gaddy will be, be able to present on those task orders that we're working on, give you a status update on those.
Very good. Thank you.
Later in the presentation.
Is this checklist that's currently posted on there? Is this checklist?
It is. It's been posted with the agenda.
Good. Thanks.
So, with that, Paul Borsna's on, and Paul, we've worked on with a long time, and, you know, Mr. Vian and I have worked with him on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project for, for a long time. And so, we're really fortunate to have him doing some third-party analysis on our behalf regarding the various submittals for, for Fu Fang. And we've asked Paul to be here and, and give you an update on, on some of the initial reviews that they've had at this point in time. So, with that, Paul, we'll, we'll have you start on, on your slides, starting at number eight. And I'll, I'll keep hitting the slides as you want to go through, and just tell me when to flip it to the next one.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Mayor and City Council, it's nice to be back this evening and be able to present a few things to you. I'll give just a quick update on some overview in terms of where we're at, and then dive into three particular items in a little bit more detail. Through this fall, first thing is Fu Fang's kind of consultant engagement. They have really fully assembled their team now, and I think it's a very credible team of engineering talent that they have pulled together. This is a complex design, and as everybody knows, and they will need some of that talent. They have hired DPS Services Group. They're actually out of Kansas City. They're a national firm in energy and industrial design. They have hired HDR, again, another national firm to submit or to support them with their air permitting exercises. We'll talk about the air permit application a bit more this evening. They've hired Stan Tech, a third national firm, to help with solid waste and nutrient management plan activities. And finally, they have hired a local-based firm, CPS, as their civil site designer. Over the last few months, we have been actively engaged in discussions, meetings, and kind of just back and forth planning discussions, as you would imagine, with all four of these teaming partners of Fu Fang. We can go to the next slide, please. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago on December fifteenth, and we met with Fu Fang, PPS, and CPS. It was really a chance for the Grand Forks Building Inspection Department to outline all of their expectations for submittals, why they have set those expectations. all of their expectations for submittals, why they have set those expectations. And then Black and Beach outlined the kind of the submittal mechanism we're going to be using. We're going to be using a information management software called ProCore, which is fairly common in the design-construction industry, as a way to manage what we expect to be lots and lots of deliverables over the next year or two. So it's a way for us to keep all the deliverables organized. It's a way for us to provide and share comments, record comments, manage documents throughout the project. So we have outlined that, discussed that. All the team members are now up and using ProCore as a software. We also talked with PPS about their expected design schedule, and we believe only in the next two quarters, Q1 and Q2 of 2023, we will be going from the conceptual site layout that we have to a more formal site plan. As I've noted, this, many people have noted, this is a complex project. We will not get to a site plan within two or three weeks of effort. It's going to be an iterative process, lots of iterative work between building sizes, building layouts, spaces between buildings, utility layouts, grades, roadways, all of that kind of thing. We have started to see concepts of this, which we'll share, but we expect that most of the first half of 2023 will be focused on site planning activities. And then we would expect in the second half of this year, Q3 and Q4, that we will get into more actual building plan submittals of what the actual building design is going to look like. But in essence, I think that weighs out the summary of what the expected submittal schedule is going to be like this year, but lots of effort going into site plan development in the coming few to several months. If you can go to the next slide, please. So let me hit on the first of about three things here. First is the conceptual plant layout. We won't attempt to go through this in any great detail. Although I have a couple more slides, which will show a little bit more detail. But even though we don't have a formal site plan, we certainly have a conceptual plant layout, as you can see here, and you can start to understand building locations, relationship of the buildings to each other, facility ingress, egress, street layouts, that type of thing. So we certainly have a sense of how the site is coming together. We had a overview workshop with the city on November ten of 2022. We went into a reasonable amount of detail in terms of just how a facility like this operates, how effectively corn comes in from the left side of the facility, and you have product that leaves the right side of the facility, and what happens in between, what people can expect to see and happen in each of the buildings. And so as we go through the site planning process, we're also taking it as an educational process to bring city planning staff up to speed in terms of what they can expect. And as I said, we would expect final site plan development up the midpoint of next year. And I'll show a few more details about the concept plan. But the second thing I think it's worth making a few points on is the air permit application and review status. There has been a lot of effort, actually, by FU-Fang and their air permitting consultant to develop an air permit application. These are relatively complex documents. A formal air permit was submitted to the North Dakota DEQ on October four, a few months ago. About that time, we previewed or reviewed the air permit application with HDR, and basically walked through with them what the air permit application said. You know, North Dakota opted to delay review of the air permit application until the CFIUS review was complete, but now that that's behind us, they have started the review process. And that's, I think they are reviewing it and looking at some more air dispersion modeling, but the, basically, the process is on track right now. And these are, as I said, relatively complex documents that would take, I'm sure, the state a number of months to complete their review. We can go to the next slide. You know, I think it's helpful to not dive into a lot of details, but just dive into a few details through the city council to understand what it means when we talk about an air permit application. There's two things, I think, at this point that's helpful to understand about the plant. Think of, as I said before, product kind of flowing from left to right. Corn comes into the plant on rail cars or trucks on the left, and through that process, it's stored, it's milled, various things happen. Sugars like glucose are produced, and then eventually the products are produced. And so that's, those are effectively the industrial processes that are taking place. The other key part of the plant is a gas turbine, which is really kind of right in the middle of the plant and provides the electricity and steam energy to basically drive this effectively, you know, small city of industrial processes all kind of working together. So if you can kind of just keep this site plan in mind and think the material's flowing generally from left to right. If we can go to the next slide, please. Here's really what an air permit does fairly qualitatively. It's looking at each step of the process that's used in wet corn milling. So you have corn receiving as the first box. You go to corn storage, wet corn milling, then eventually product drying, loading, and shipping. Each one of these processes has a variety of air emissions associated with it, and what the air permit does is it looks at each of these processes. It looks at what's being produced. It looks at the size, the volume, the concentration of those emissions that are happening in each of these boxes, and then it adds a pollution control technology, and it effectively sets an emission limit that obviously conforms to regulatory limits for the emissions from each one of these, each one of these processes. And of course, their power plant, their natural gas-fired turbines have their own air emissions, which are going to be treated as well. So if you really care for the details, and you want to pick this up and look at an air permit application in detail, effectively, you'll see lots of descriptions of what's going inside of each of these boxes, and the air pollution control technologies that get wrapped around each one of these emission points. We can go to the next slide, please. So a few summary comments on the air permit. The proposed technologies are fairly conventional and expected air pollution control technologies. We were not surprised by any of the technologies that they had proposed. Just to kind of help you think about the scale of this thing, the gas turbine is a sixty-five-megawatt gas turbine. It's actually going to run closer to fifty megawatts. So if you put that into context, you know, a relatively small coal gas-fired power plant owned by an electric utility might be in a range of two-hundred megawatts. That'd be a relatively small one. The Rainbow Energy Center around Washburn, a very big coal-fired power plant, is about a thousand megawatts. So here, we're running a gas turbine that's going to be around fifty megawatts. Fifty megawatts is not insignificant. It's a pretty good-sized gas turbine. But in terms of just kind of comparing it to smaller or large utility-sized electrical plants, this kind of puts this thing into scale. I think one other comment that will put this into context is that the plant will emit less than the threshold amounts that would be required to make it a major source. So the EPA in the state has established kind of limits, which if you exceed them, you're considered a major source. And honestly, there are thousands and thousands, tens of thousands of major sources across the country. The emissions proposed in the application that has been submitted keeps them on the lower side of those thresholds, and so they will not be a major source. And so I think just, you know, the size of the power plant and the fact that they are not considered a major source, at least that's what the application is suggesting, for good reason, helps put, I think, the size of this plant and the emissions and scale, emissions in context. I mean, they're not trivial, but at the same time, there's lots and lots of power plants, and there's lots and lots of industries out there that are significantly, much more significantly larger emitters than what this facility is going to be. There's going to be an initial meeting with the DEQ coming up in a few days, in about a week, on January nine, and more discussions of the air permit at that point. And if we can go to the next slide, just a couple more slides here. Third thing I wanted to hit on is the nutrient management plan. This has been developed and submitted to the state. I want to actually just jump down into about the middle bullet here and just kind of give people context. What is a nutrient management plan, and why is it needed? The wastewater treatment plant is using a biological process to treat the wastewater. In the process, it generates lots of biological sludge, and those are the solids that are needing to be managed. It's the biological sludge. It's a fairly common practice, it's a very common practice across the U.S. that biological sludge from the, sometimes termed biosolids, from wastewater treatment plants are land-applied. This is considered a beneficial reuse of an industrial byproduct. These biological sludges have very good nutrient, phosphorus, and nitrogen levels, and it is beneficial to use them in an agricultural setting, because in effect, you're getting free fertilizer. So places like FU-Fang strike deals with area farmers, and they land-apply the biological solids or sludge typically in the spring or fall, after a growing season, and add nutrient value to the city or to the land. As a point of reference, cargo in Wapperton, the wet corn mill there, land-applies their biological sludge. To give you a sense of scale, there's about eighty-three-hundred tons of corn mash produced each year, and this is equal to one pretty good-sized truckload per day that's going to leave the plant gate and take this dried biological sludge to some area field and land-apply it. So this plan has been developed. It's been submitted to the state and under state review right now. And, you know, similar to the air permit, nothing, it's a fairly common process that you go through with this type of facility. One more slide, and I think I'm done. Two more, actually. So what the nutrient management plan does is it, if it's developed to meet state, North Dakota state rules for land-apulation, it effectively describes the rate, the volume, the amount of sampling that needs to happen, the storage requirements, everything to make sure that you don't inadvertently overload or cause some other adverse effect by land- applying this biological sludge. And last slide, the, I think what's still needed, and what we are still working with a developer on, is a more of a description of the type and size of solids and nutrient storage facilities onsite. The nutrient management plan really addresses what happens when the solids leave the plant. We are still working to more fully understand onsite storage processes, and the contingency plan would be as if solids cannot be land-applied, they will be put into a landfill, and we are still working through details of when and how that might occur. But it's certainly to everyone's benefit to minimize landfill placement of the biological solids and place and land-apply them instead. So that's where we're at, out of three different parts of the process. We expect to continue some of our iterative discussions with FU-Fang over the next few months, and keep moving towards a more like concept plan to more of a formal site plan that will ultimately be approved by the city. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Mayor, before we transition to Sean Gaddy to talk about some of the utilities, will you take any questions for Mr. Boersma before we move on to Sean Gaddy?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any questions from council for Mr. Boersma? We got him here. Vice President Weber, please.
I'm interested in the discussion about the biosolids. You're describing those as a beneficial use of essentially a fertilizer, and that FU-Fang is projected to produce approximately one railcar of fertilizer per day. I saw the statement, I think it said it will not exceed area needs. Have I gotten that right so far?
And to say, if I could amend one thing you said-
Please.
-and be one truckload, one truckload per day, not one railcar per day, so a little smaller volume, one truckload.
And then there was a discussion about, because you can't just put it out, put it on the fields, one truckload per day. It doesn't work that way. So there would be storage needs and possibly the need for sending some to the landfill. That's all yet to be discovered and calculated. Is that correct?
Yes. So they could feasibly store, you know, many, a typical wastewater treatment plant might have the capacity to store many, many months of frankly solids onsite, and at the same time, they could create additional storage at a particular field within requirements set by the state. So there's two options for storage, onsite and offsite storage, but the details of how much storage is going to be needed for different times of the year. Typically, more storage is needed during winter time when you can't apply things. Obviously, you can't land-apply right now. So you tend to work up your storage piles in the winter and work them down in the summertime. Those details need to be worked out. That is correct.
And on the air, on the air emissions, there'll be a meeting with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, January, later this month. When might we expect more definitive information on the biosolids?
I don't know the question of biosolids offhand. We can make that inquiry. I would certainly, these are not terribly complex questions to answer. I would certainly think within the next month or two, we will be able to give a follow-up report to this body and give you some more details on storage requirements, and it really is part of that, more information on the whole design of the wastewater treatment plant at the same time.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Boersma. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Phelan, where does the wastewater treatment, Mr. Spicer, please. Where does the wastewater treatment biosolids come for the city's wastewater treatment plant?
Right now, they're in our lagoons is where our solids are. Yep.
And then if we have to disperse to them, where does that go?
It would have to, we'd have to do similar things. We'd have to likely land-apply ours also. I think some of the positives with land- applying a biosolids from an agri-business is that it's not mixed with municipal wastewater. And so what they're going to be applying is what they're taking from agriculture, and they're going to put it back. We have more challenges. Obviously, we're dealing with human waste and all those things. They're going to separate that out, so they're going to have an ag waste. They're not going to integrate like we are with the municipal wastewater treatment plant. So I think Mr. Spicer had a question, and I think as part of it, odors are in the agreement. We're going to look at odors of all areas of the particular facility. So that'll be part of what Mr. Boersma and others will be reviewing as part of the final review.
Has to answer the questions.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Boersma? All right. Thank you, Mr. Boersma. Appreciate it. All right, thank you, Mr. Boersma, appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gaddy, please. Excuse me, sir, we can't hear, please. Mr. Gaddy, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Porczanski, members of the city council.
I'm sorry. Okay, can you hear me now?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to listen, could you please sit down, sir?
You changed the water gallons four or five times, okay?
Sir, sir, you are disrupting the meeting right now, you will be asked to leave if you do not sit down.
He says one truckload a day. How many times is that going to change?
Excuse me, sir, you've been warned once, you're going to be asked to leave if you do not sit down, sir.
I will bring a sample of what it smells like, and you guys will all leave this room like that.
Please sit down, thank you. Mr. Gaddy, the floor is yours, I apologize, but please continue. My apologies, and the council apologizes for that, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Porczanski, members of the city council. Just real quickly, want to provide an update on where we're at in the city infrastructure development process. Specifically, want to hit on the wastewater treatment plant, and where we're at in the process of working with the C-MAR, both on the Phase 1 and Phase 2 projects, so I'll hit on that in a moment, as well as the annexation area improvements, and so, and then from there, talk a little bit about where we're at with schedule, and ask Todd to, to close out the presentation from that point. If you recall, or generally, and I believe we've shared this graphic before, but really there's, there's two types of infrastructure that we're, we're developing to support the, the project and support the annexation area. This graphic is really indicating what we've depicted before is what we call the offsite trunk infrastructure improvements. The, the specific trunk improvement that do want to hit on this evening is our progress with the wastewater treatment plant, the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 upgrades, but do recall, there were a handful of other offsite trunk improvements that we also will be bringing forward updates here in the coming months. The wastewater plant itself is the, the most expensive and the most critical path item, so specific to why we want to actually emphasize that a little bit here this evening. There were also the annexation area improvements. I believe we've also shared this graphic before with the council. If you'll recall, when we did share this graphic, we provided a little bit more granular detail on the phasing of all of these improvements, so surrounding, surrounding the plant site itself, as well as to serve the, the annexation area with infrastructure, get sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, et cetera. We do have a phasing plan that we've worked to develop with the engineering department that will progress through everything you see here as far as line work on the screen over the next few years. What I want to highlight is what we're calling the Phase 1 annexation area improvements and, and our progress and, and those, and the design of those areas. Specifically, or also generally, the Phase 1 improvements are largely to get thing, the underground and infrastructure completed along 27th Avenue North, and generally along the perimeter of the Fu Fang site in order for us to be able to pave those areas next year and then move into underground improvements in, in the other areas. So if you're looking at this graphic or map, we're, we're going to be working from the south 27th Avenue to the north as we phase these improvements across the next couple of years, and like I said, going to emphasize our, our progress on, on the Phase 1, the southern portions of this, and where we're at in that process. As far as the, the wastewater treatment plant, admittedly, we are probably a couple months behind where we would like to be in the development of what's called the, the GMP, or the, the gross maximum price, which is essentially the price the C-MAR will work to establish, what the cost of, of the plant improvement projects will be. We, if you'll recall, this is going way back, probably, I believe it was the end of 2020, we came forward to council at time with the Phase 1 wastewater treatment plant improvements, and, and we proceeded with the design of those Phase 1 improvements with the intent that we are going to bid them standalone. We then made the decision in 2021, I believe it was the end of 21, 21, early 2022, to combine the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 projects into one combined package with the, the C-MAR contractor. And so we're at varying levels of design, we're essentially, I'll call it 90% designed on the Phase 1, Phase 1 plant improvements, and we're closer to a 20, 25% design on the Phase 2 improvements. We do intend to bring all of that forward in one complete GMP package, like I mentioned, with the, with the C-MAR, and we're progressing towards what we call a 30% progress in total between Phase 1 and Phase 2, that GMP being prepared in 2023. Now, we don't expect that that will be our final number, and so what we'll be looking at is where are we at with the costs at that time, when we bring that, or when we review that number with the C-MAR and city staff here in January, and likely we'll be then looking at the costs and, and doing some value engineering as we progress towards a 60% GMP, obviously on our, our path to 100%. At that time, we expect we'll have the scope and the, the costs of the project established to a level that we'll share with the council. We'll also be working with Fu Fang at that time when we have the 60% to then determine what will their escrow or primary benefit share be on the plant in order to request that deposit to proceed with the construction agreement with the C-MAR at that time. Ahead of that, going back to the Phase 1 project, there are some specific long lead equipment items in that Phase 1 scope that we are going to look to amend here, I believe it's the 9th of January, we are going to look to bring forward an amendment to the C-MAR's pre-construction services agreement to allow them to procure some of that equipment. Believe, I'm trying to recall, some of the various pumping equipment, et cetera, that is going to be needed in order for them to not be held up on schedule and just get out ahead of that before they give us the full construction package. So you will be seeing that coming forward here in the, in the next couple of weeks as we look to progress that Phase 1 project of, of the plant. For the annexation area and specifically the Phase 1 elements, the Phase 1 elements, one of those items we got out of the gate quickly on, which was the, the stormwater pond. I believe most are aware that the excavation of that, at least the bulk excavation of that is primarily complete and was completed here just a few weeks ago in December. There still will be some ongoing work on the pond as we, as we warm into the summer months, and, and most of that work will primarily be restoration activities, so topsoil, seeding, erosion control, et cetera, on the pond itself. In addition to that, in the first, or towards the first quarter of 2023, there are a handful of those utility improvements along 27th Avenue North, were in various states of completion of those designs. What we expect is here in the next month, we will be bringing forward to council a request for the approval of plans and specs in order to be able to advertise those Phase 1 designs here, like I said, towards the end of the first quarter, to stay on task with delivering those annexation area improvements for the, for the annexation area in the Fu Fang site. Yeah, except for the most part, we're, like I said, between 90, 95% on most of the, I'll call them the standard utilities, and then for the, the specific industrial pump station that we are looking at for handling the industrial waste in, in that area, that's a little bit behind, but we do still expect to bid that by mid, mid 2023. I've mentioned a couple of times that we are maybe a couple of months behind where we would hope to be at this point, I think, I think there's been a, a few different reasons for that, but we are working here and, and will bring forward in, in January here, next council cycle, a comprehensive update of this schedule that you've seen prior in order to indicate on, on all of these elements, whether it's the trunk improvements or the Phase 1 and beyond improvements, where we expect those to land here now where we're, we're at, given where we're at in our progress with each. So Todd, want to add to that?
Again, Mr. Boersma talked about the environmental reviews, those are ongoing right now, and we'll, we'll continue to bring that back to you, and, and sometimes every, probably every city council meeting, you'll hear more and more details as we work through it. The submittals, and I think we're going to have to start making some decisions, and we're going to really try to separate whether it's an annexation infrastructure item that we're, we're going to move forward with. Some of these items, as Mr. Weber, you talked about, you know, the raw water supply that we're talking about, that's specific, more specifically, you know, relate to, to Fu Fang. The industrial wastewater pump station that Mr. Gaddy said is about 20% design, that's going to specifically relate to Fu Fang. And then obviously the wastewater treatment plant, there's a, you know, a capacity that they're going to take as part of that, too, and so there'll be some things that are the standard items that are going to move forward as part of the annexation that will both serve the Highway 81 area and also Fu Fang, and then there's also specific items regarding Fu Fang that will require escrow accounts. And so on those things that relate specifically to, to Fu Fang, the important part of the development agreement is we want to continue to make sure that we get over all the hurdles of the environmental reviews, so that we can come to you before we move forward with some of the detailed bidding and approvals and escrow that we've, we've gotten over some of the, some of the environmental concerns and that we've been able to move forward though. So, but I think between January, where we are today, through March, we're going to make a lot of progress. And, and Mr. Gaddy showed that, the, the GAN chart with, with the timetable, so one of the really early things we're going to do in January is reconfigure our, our timeframe of where we're at now, and so that helps us when we want to bid our infrastructure items, and working with Fu Fang USA and their design team about where they're at so we can align ourselves on the, on the bidding, because we want to make sure that we're bidding things, you know, in, in a prudent way so that we can get the best bids possible as we move, move forward. The other thing is, I think Mr., Mr. Boersma talked about, we're going to receive a lot of more final details of information, you know, whether it's raw water supply, whether it's, you know, how much wastewater we're going to receive. We, we certainly have received conceptual numbers that we've been relying upon, but as we work through some of the final design, we're going to really refine all of those before we go to final design approval and bidding on those items, so much more to come on, on those particular items as we move forward. I would say the one thing that's been positive, and council member VN and I, we attended a Red River Valley Water Supply meeting regarding the project. I think one of the things that we've really done in, in, in Grand Forks on behalf of the state of North Dakota is, number one, Governor Burgum gave us a presentation to North Dakota legislature, some of the priorities, and one priority is soybean processing, and highlighted all that we've done, including one of the three plants that's in Grand Forks that we're moving forward with, and really trying to leverage and diversify our economy in energy and egg, and we're really at the forefront of that. And so there's been lots of positive, not, not only in the natural gas pipeline that our legislators, not only in Grand Forks, but throughout the state, want to get that done so that we can increase our egg processing production. The other part, we have to work in parallel is that Red River Valley Water Supply project, not only to provide water to central, but more importantly for us, eastern North Dakota, and there's a real move on both the natural gas and the Red River Valley Water Supply project to get those done. And I think we've done, council member Weber, as part of legislative, I think it's heartening to see when you read the Grand Forks Herald, our legislative group, about all the priorities that they're really going to push, and those are really the ones that we pushed in advance, and I think the, the time is right on all those, we should feel very good about that. I just wanted to highlight this on Red River Valley Water Supply project, and this is an important map about where can we do economic development in North Dakota, and we understand you have to put processing where the crops are, and really the crops are, are in, in the east side of where we're focused here. And you can see in red, the state of North Dakota has put this together, and, and in a lot of areas where in our region, the Red River is going to be the water supply for our region, where aquifers are, are, right now are at capacity, and so not only does Grand Forks have capacity through the Red River currently, but in the future, the Red River and our, our intake on the Red River, it are, is going to be the supply source to provide water throughout our region, not only for Grand Forks, but the Northern Valley. So this is an important map to show where we're strategically located. Here's another one where the, on the Red River Valley Water Supply, where is the water in North Dakota? And though it's a bit of a, a high-level concept right here, it demonstrates how much water is in the Missouri River, and how important it is to North Dakota, and how important it is to move that water to the eastern part of the state. And even when we do that, and we keep saying this over and over, even with moving, you know, a significant amount of water to the eastern North Dakota, how little that really is as part of the, the main water supply that we have in North Dakota. And I think the other thing that's really important to note is, if you look on this map, as we keep saying, Grand Forks, if we're so willing, is in a strategic location. Most, or a significant amount of the egg processing is in the Southern Valley, which makes sense. Cass County has done a lot to develop, whether it's an urban or an egg processing. However, Grand Forks is in a better position on water supply, and we're in a better position to discharge, and that's why we're in the unique opportunity right now to get egg processing, because the state of North Dakota is pushing companies to go to Grand Forks in the Northern Valley because we can provide processing. Certainly, there's been a lot of egg processing that's been done in the Southern Valley, but they're tapped out with water supply and discharge ability. That's why when you look at this map, where we have a strategic opportunity. Even with that, our strategic ability to, to provide water supply and provide a wastewater discharge, we are still a major part of the Red River Valley Water Supply project to provide us redundancy, provide us our insurance, i.e. an insurance policy as we move forward, so.
Ma'am, please, you're disrupting the meeting again, please continue, Mr. Phelan, apologize.
I think.
Just continue, Mr. Phelan.
I think the other part is, is that, the other part.
Ms. Carlson, you're disrupting the meeting again.
... has been denied vote based on the fact that it is a contract. So if it is a contract, and, and please read to me, read to me.
Ms. Carlson.
The very top, the very top.
This is your warning, you're going to be asked to leave.
Point, you know what, read that to me, and I will be able to.
Ms. Carlson, you're going to be asked to leave if you keep disrupting the city council meeting.
What is the sentence that asks?
Please sit down, I don't want to have to ask you to leave, ma'am.
Somebody please read that to me.
Ma'am.
What does it say?
Please sit down.
What does it say? It says Fu Fang has 30 days to meet those requirements. They have met none of them.
Okay, thank you.
That's breach of the agreement. Should we talk about more lines, Mr. Porczanski? Do you want to talk about more lines?
Ma'am, we're going to have to ask you to leave, I'm apologizing, we're going to hold up now.
How many more times are we going to sit through these stupid meetings?
Mr. Mayor, can I, I'll move to adjourn, to recess? Sounds good, thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second? Got a second for Ms. Lunskey? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Let's do five minutes here, and we'll try to get back to some stability.
You won't get back.
Thank you. Ms. Lunskey, if you want to come back, we're going to call the meeting back to order, and allow Mr. Phelan. We do need to operate city business here, and if there is another disruption, we're going to have to ask the Sergeant of Arms to escort the person out. There's been multiple warnings. We are trying to run a civil meeting here, and we can't handle continued disruptions. It's disrupting everybody's time.
If you're asking about the water, I would like to know how much water was requested.
All right.
Ms. Carlson, this is your, this is the last opportunity to please sit down.
Ten million gallons a day, correct?
Right now, uh...
Am I wrong?
If I could answer the question...
That's for us, Pete.
The question is, um, right now, we're playing for a 6.6 million gallons per day on the raw water side?
Yeah.
On the average. And when you deal with an industrial facility, they're pretty steady as you go across. It's not like they're, they're going to use a certain amount. I think right now, on the wastewater effluent side, what they're going to return to city, we're probably in that two and a half million gallons per day. And so, but again, as we said, as we start bringing these projects, we'll have all those refined numbers with the final design. And the last thing I wanted to say, Mayor Bochensky, is Mr. Shooter Ash is here on behalf of Fu Fang USA.
Yay.
And we also asked him to, as we work through this, I think you're going to see more and more of Mr. Shooter Ash as we move forward. So, I would just ask, if you have any questions, and also, if you have any questions of Mr. Shooter Ash, he's certainly willing to answer any of your questions, too.
I would ask...
So, with that, I turn it back to you, Mayor.
Ms. Carlson, you're going to have to be asked to leave now. You're going to have to leave.
...at the draft report just last year.
Ms. Carlson, you're going to have to leave the council chambers now.
Eighteen hours a day on this stuff.
Okay. Ms. Carlson, can you please, can you please exit the council chambers this time?
You are an ass. You are a lying ass.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor. I guess with that, we turn it back over to you, and if you have any questions of any of us or Mr. Shooter Ash.
All right. We'll open it up now. Any council questions at this time? It's, I know it's difficult to get back into work mode, but please, take your time.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please, Mr. Weber.
Um, so I was asking this earlier during the development agreement discussion, but the question about raw water, somewhere between 6.6 to 7.2, I'm not sure where we're hearing this 10 million gallon per day figure, but the 6.6, 7.2, is that a minimum, maximum that we can anticipate?
Yeah.
And I don't recall previously hearing about a reservoir on-site to help soften some of the ups and downs of that peak demand.
Yeah.
Is that the intention? Can you discuss that?
I can't answer that, but Mr. Shooter Ash, would you be able to answer that question?
So, the average per day is the 6.6 million gallons per day. We provided what we saw peak flow, because we wanted to make sure it could be supplied at 7.2. But to answer your specific question, there is a, called a reservoir or buffer tank on the incoming, so that that is, takes the, kind of takes the demand fluctuation drop from, from the city's supply in, in that tank.
So, 6.6, I'm sorry...
Because our process is pulling at different rates all the time.
Sure.
So, we have a buffer tank.
I see. Good. And 6.6 is, is an average?
That's the average.
And 7.2 is what we're anticipating as the max, then?
Our process peak, but we still expect that incoming to stay stable.
If you put the microphones together and let the microphone...
That's 6.6.
If you can't hear them. If you put the microphones together...
Please, Mr. Maticek, please, please sit down.
I just want to...
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Weber?
It did. And then, this is more from Mr. Phelan, well, for both of you. We're hearing about the project being behind schedule. In fact, we've had to revise the schedule because of our, our decision to hold off on any further work until the CFIUS report. So, I just wanted to clarify, we're not behind schedule. We now have a revised schedule because of that decision.
And if you can get as close to the mics as possible, please, Mr. Phelan. Thank you.
Mayor Bochensky and Councilmember Veen, you are correct. We're revising the schedule. Obviously, some matters have come in our way, and so, we've, we've held off, and I think that's been strategic. The state of North Dakota has done similar, as we talked about the area mission. Certainly, it was submitted, but they didn't, they didn't start taking a hard look at it until they, we were uncertain we were through the CFIUS process, and there wasn't going something to stop it, the project, knowing that there's lots of permits to review.
Very good. And then, going back to Mr. Gaddy's presentation on the wastewater treatment, we had been talking about and planning for a new wastewater treatment facility before we'd heard about Peony or Fu Fang. And so, that was already in, in the works. Tonight, Sean was talking about Phase One and Phase Two. The plans for the wastewater treatment facility, those were altered to some degree because of the prospect of having Fu Fang development here. And is that why we now have a Phase One and Phase Two, or is it always going to be Phase One, Phase Two?
Mayor Bochensky and Councilmember Weber, you are correct. Phase One was always known as that first-out, things that we wanted to improve that were already in the existing wastewater treatment. There were some renewal items that we needed. Our plant is 20 years old. And there were also some additions to the existing plant, like the generator and those sorts of things. So, that was always Phase One that we were going to do first. And then, as you recall, we had additional phases that were going to add capacity, because we were, we were at, we were nearing max capacity with our existing uses. Then, Fu Fang came along with this particular development, and it really sped up our need to go beyond Phase One and also to move forward, forward with the expansion. And so, when we talk about Fu Fang and how they interlate, it's some of those renewal parts, and it's also as part of that expansion that we're working on right now. I think this has actually worked out to our better favor, that some of these things that have had to slow down, and certainly we have supply chain challenges, we have constructability challenges, and as, I think this more reasonable design and construction timeline that we're probably under is going to lend well to us as we move forward. And then, we'll have to align with, obviously, there's lots of buildings to go on the Fu Fang site. We want to make sure that we align with what they're doing with, with us. So, I think there's really a silver lining on us being able to take in some additional time to not only design, but to bid and then construct.
Real good. And in relation to the silver lining, just a round number, we talk about the city spending $100 million on this. But most of that was for the wastewater treatment facility. We were already going to be doing. This expansion into a Phase Two helps us enhance our, our opportunity for not just a project like Fu Fang, but for future economic and industrial development. And with, with the Fu Fang development and the, the development agreement, we actually have Fu Fang helping us to pay for a part of this important infrastructure for our community, correct?
You are correct, Mr. Weber. And also, epitome energy. Certainly, epitome energy is going to discharge, you know, significantly less, but they're probably going to be around 200,000 to 300,000 gallons per day back to the city of Grand Forks' wastewater treatment plant. So, again, we, we would have been harder pressed to be able to treat that. So, it really works in parallel with both industries that we're talking about right now. Later on the agenda, you're going to, you're going to approve $54 million for the wastewater treatment plant through the state revolving loan fund, the Clean Water. And so, that's what Sean's talking about. Really, that's, most of that was already planned. We're, we're taking Phase One and Two, and we're combining it under One. We're combining it all under a construction manager at risk, as opposed, we were talking about it before, Phase One, we were going to design, bid, build, and then do a C Mar on the, more of the expansion pieces. And now, because everything more aligned, we're going to do it all under One, under the C Mar. One thing that's really important, when Sean went through those, between now and, and March and April, is really to look at those cost estimates with our concerns with, you know, this 30% cost inflation about where we're going to land, and some things that we can do to try to mitigate some of the cost inflation that we've seen over the last two to three years.
Very good. And then, one more final point of clarification on this issue of Phase One and Phase Two. The combining of Phase One and Phase Two is, is being done for construction efficiencies and cost savings?
Yeah, absolutely. And we want one contractor out there, one lead, under our construction manager, so that we don't start some projects, and then all of a sudden bring in other contractors under One. We don't want confusion, and we want, we want the best constructability as we can, and combine as many resources as we can as, as part of the economy as a scale.
Makes a great deal of sense. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Thank you, Mr. Shooter Ash.
All right. Any further questions at this time? Anybody online? All right. Thank you for the update. Moving on to four, public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
Formant One, public hearing and second reading of ordinance relating to snowmobile routes.
All right. Mr. Gossett, can you go over how this reads now, and exactly how this is going to work? Obviously, people were here tonight to talk about the snowmobile route. This isn't placing the snowmobile route. This is placing this ordinance change so that we can take that under this body in the future, and take information, gather information, and make a decision.
Correct.
So, can you spell out the exact verbiage of where we're at, and how we got to today, please?
Yes. Before the change, as you know, the Chief of Police was to determine the snowmobile routes within the city. And so, what this ordinance does is it, it shifts that determination, and who makes that determination, from the Chief of Police. And it'll now be done annually. There'll be a recommendation from the mayor, and then approval by the city council, is the way it, it sets up. It, this doesn't set the route. It doesn't, it just sets who's got the authority to determine what that, what that snowmobile route would be within the city. Just a couple of points I do want to make is, we did, did provide a memo when this first was presented, as far as penalties are concerned, as far as motor vehicles within the greenway. They are fairly significant. It can be a penalty of up to $500 for a motor vehicle being within the greenway. In addition, the penalties for violating the snowmobile ordinances within the city, for example, driving a snowmobile within the city, not necessarily in the greenway, but within the city itself, or any other provision of that snowmobile ordinance is $40. And I think somebody had mentioned that before. And so, if, you know, if there was some thought, we could take a look at, taking a look at that particular offense going forward, and we could take a look at it to make sure it aligns with state law and our city ordinances. So, just for your edification. Again, this particular ordinance does, only establishes who's going to be making that determination, not what the route would be.
Okay. All right. Before I open it up to council, I just want to open the public hearing. If anyone wants to speak to the ordinance in and of itself, we'll open the public hearing now. So, anyone that wishes to speak to that portion, please, step forward. All right. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion of that, and I'll open it up to council for comments and thoughts. Mr. Weigle.
I'll be quick, Mayor. I'll, I'll move approval on this. I think it's a great change to our, to our ordinance as it sits. I'm in support of it. I'd also ask Mr. Gossett to please bring those other ordinance that are snowmobile-specific back to the city council, so that we can update them if we need to, and maybe assign different fines and fees to some of the violations.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weigle. We got a motion. We have a second. We got a second from Ms. Osowski, Councilwoman Osowski. Any further comments? The ordinance as it reads at this time from council. Anybody online?
Mayor, I just, this is Ken, just, I, I'm in support of the ordinance as, as being revised, and just find a vote in favor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Veen. Appreciate that. Any other comments? Mr. Weber, please.
After the vote, if I could ask another clarifying question.
No, I think that's, I think that's great. I think we got to separate the, you know, how the route's getting set versus the route itself. And I think this'll, this'll lend to that. So, seeing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Weber, please, if you have any comments before we move on to action items, please.
Yeah, just for clarification, the, the route that is currently approved, it is the same route that we have had for the last 10, 12 years? Is that correct? There's been some sense from, from some quarters that, that snowmobiles had always been allowed on the greenway, and now they've been restricted. Actually, it's the same route that we've had for the last dozen years. That's the current...
With the one, I give you the one caveat, 42nd Avenue was a corridor that was allowed until this recent one, and that's no longer allowed. So, that was taken, and I believe they added a short corridor to get to Valley Dairy along Washington Avenue, I think. And is that correct, Chief? Yeah, Chief's nodding. If I missed anything on that?
Just a clarification. It'd actually be North 42nd Street, not 42nd Avenue. But other than that, the northern one is largely the same through the northern part of the greenway, but we took 42nd Street off due to public safety concerns. And the Valley Dairy at 47th and Washington is where they can refuel, but there is no north-south route from there.
At this point, there have been no changes in terms of where snowmobiles are allowed or not allowed on the greenway from the last 12 years.
Correct.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weber. I'll move on to action items. Any items that council members would like to have pulled for further discussion today?
5.2, please.
5.2, thank you, Ms. Osowski. I'll just, I'll just wait a moment here. Give you a chance to review. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to move forward with items 5.1, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, and 5.8. Get a motion to approve those items?
Mayor?
Yep, Mr. Weber.
Mayor, one quick question, and this was, this is one that Todd vetted. I'm sorry, I didn't get to my, to my mute.
Oh, go for it.
Is 5.1, is 5.1...
Is that the one that Todd, you were talking about for the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Can I pull that one then?
Yes, sir. All right. So we got 5.1, 5.2 polled, so we'll go items 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, and 5.8. We get a motion to approve. We got a motion from Vice President Weber. We have a second from Mr. Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. 5.1 is the adopted resolution authorizing the issuance of the Water Reserve Revenue Bond 2023a, SRF, and the Wastewater Reserve Revenue Bonds 2023c, RSRF.
On the $54,620,000 state revolving loan will be a wastewater reserve revenue bonds, and this is a resolution to authorize issuance of those bonds. In September, the council allowed staff to apply for this financing for the wastewater treatment plant improvements, and the North Dakota Public Finance Authority gave their approval in November. Did you have specific questions?
No, I think that answered it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions, Mr.--
Move approval.
Mr. Weber, motion is to approve. We have a second for Mr. Weigle. Any further comments on M. 5.1? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 5.2 award the bid number 2022-19, Grand Forks Regional Water Treatment Plant and Wastewater Treatment Plant Chemicals.
Thank you. Oh, we have Ms. Parvy here, too. Did you have a question on that one, Ms. Osowski, please?
I don't have a question. I just have comments that I think, first of all, I am fairly confident that the city follows laws and regulations and everything like that. But there are some things that I just want to point out here. This is about chemicals that are dumped in our water. First of all, let me see. The city, and not just the city, probably a lot of other cities are dumping ammonia. It is colorless, highly irritating gas with a sharp suffocating odor. It dissolves easily in water. That is being dumped in your drinking water. Also sodium hydroxide. It is a white powder. Hang on. I guess. It's used for other things. Hold on. There's liquid polysulfate, which is used as fertilizer being dumped in your water. There's chlorine. It is, there's fluoride being dumped in our water. There is also sodium aluminate. I mean, a lot of these things are poisonous. And I know that we are following FDA guidelines and everything like that, but I really don't enjoy being microdosed with ammonia. And I just think that people should be aware of what they're actually drinking and putting in their bodies. And I mean, yeah, one cigarette isn't going to kill you, but if you go and you smoke a pack of cigarettes a day, eventually it'll catch up to you, just like probably microdosing with ammonia and liquid polysulfate. I really think that people should just do their own research and really start paying attention to what is being put in our drinking water, not just in Grand Forks, but all over this country. And I know people say this stuff isn't poisonous, but when our city employees have to wear a hazmat suit to dump this stuff into our drinking water, I think it, it is concerning. So that is my comment. I mean, I'm not going to motion to approve this, but--
Mr. Phelan, could you give us some insight? I know the wastewater treatment plant, just give us some insight into how these chemicals are used, the difference between our osmosis system versus our conventional system. Can you give us, I mean, she's peaked, and Ms. Osowski's have peaked my interest as well, so please--
Sure.
--give us some more further insight.
Mayor Bocinski and Councilmember Osowski, we had a nice conversation today about this. It's the, it's the magic of chemistry that somehow we can take the Red Lake and Red Rivers together, right, and make really great water, right? And how does that happen? Well, we have really great systems, but we also need chemicals, right? It's, and it's all part of our quality of life. And certainly, things that we do with our water is that we have lots of solids in the Red River, right? Hence, it's called the Red River. And so we got to take that, those out of the water, okay? And so a lot of these chemicals are used for that. The other thing we got to do is disinfect the water. And so when you, when you talk about ammonia and chlorine, we need, need to make sure that all the microorganisms that are in the water that we don't want to drink, that we're able to kill. And so when they, when they come into our drinking water and, and we can verify with the EPA and the Department of Environmental Quality, that we're doing all the appropriate steps with, with water treatment. And certainly, if you take anything out of a silo, but if you take it in as a combination, everything works together and there is a magic of chemistry. And it allows us to, to have a higher level of, of quality of life in our, in our area. And I, Councilmember Osowski and I talked a little bit about the bottled water she drinks.
I do not drink tap water.
You do not drink tap water.
Not just from the City of Grand Forks, but--
I did tell her, I did tell her that a lot of the bottled water is coming from water treatment plants. And I said, I would say the only large difference between if you buy, you go and buy something at the convenience store that's in a bottle, probably one of the bigger difference, one of the biggest differences is that water will not have fluoride in it. The City of Grand Forks does put fluoride in our water and sometimes there is controversy in communities about whether we should fluoride water or not. We do do that for, you know, health reasons, and so we are doing that. But if you go, not to, if you go buy your bottle of Dasani water from Coca-Cola--
I don't drink Dasani water.
Coca-Cola is not going to put fluoride in their water, but certainly as a, as a public drinking system, we do put fluoride in that. So we're regulated by all those things, but when in doubt, we'll, we'll give anybody a tour of the water treatment plant and see how we all do that. There are things we should, I was telling Ms. Osowski, too, is that we have this conventional treatment plant where we rely upon chemical, chemicals, ozone, and then chlorine to, to disinfect the water. Then we have the other terrain of the treatment plant is membranes and reverse osmosis. And then we were talking about some of the chemicals because we have these membranes and the water molecules are pressured and forced through these membranes to treat the water. But what we have to do is we got to make sure those membranes aren't fouled or become dirty. And so we have to use chemicals to clean those membranes so that they continue to push water through them, and we don't have any really fouling of our membranes. And so we do use chemicals to clean, to clean those membranes, too. So it's a relatively sophisticated process and even though we're, we always worry about the chemical industry, we do need them to make sure things are disinfected and, and appropriate for human consumption, too. So, but if anybody wants a tour, even in, anybody watching, we certainly have some great tours that are given by our operators.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any further, Mr. Weber, please.
Water tastes great in Grand Forks. I'll move, move approval, please. Thanks.
All right. We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. The motion was from Vice President Weber and a second from Mr. Weigle. Any further comment, item 5.2? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Didn't miss, okay. We got a unanimous vote on that. All right. Thank you. We'll move on. Information items, there are none tonight, and seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1 is the vendor list and engineer's estimate that's attached.
All right. We got a motion to approve the vendor's list. We got a motion for Mr. Weigle and a second wishes to make the second. Well, Mr. Weber beat you to it, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Onto eight, city administrator comments. Any comments tonight, this evening, Mr. Phelan?
Just a few, Mayor. Just a reminder, we do have a joint Grand Forks, East Grand Forks City Council meeting at East Grand Forks City Hall, first floor conference room at 5:00. The plan is to have roll call, to have the SRF consultant that submitted the proposal and was accepted, just to go over that first phase of development and then also maybe go a little bit longer about how, how you would cite a river crossing. So please be there and I think your colleagues from East Grand Forks want to engage with you and, and try to come up with some sort of solution. The other meeting, I want to make sure, I think this is all on your calendar, a week from Wednesday, we're here at City Hall with your colleagues from the Park Board and we're going to have the consultant that worked on that quality of life feasibility give you an update on that. And again, your colleagues from the Park Board are, are interested in engaging with, on that. Finally, Mayor and Council, I did listen to a little bit of the mayor, or the governor's address to the legislature. Not only did he mention soybean crushing facilities throughout the state, I think the importance of the city, he did mention an appropriation that he's working on with an emergency clause to provide snow removal funding relief. And it sounded like there is going to be a bill early in the session just because of our, our near record snow removal so far. And it sounded like what he said is that there's unanimous, or there's enough votes in the legislature to move forward. This has happened before when the state's been more flush with money. So I would anticipate what he described is that we, we likely will receive some funds here in the first quarter to help with some of the snow removal costs that we've already seen. And obviously with snow removal, with all the snow that we've received so far, Mr. Grasser did warn me, and certainly we have a great flood protection system, but we're on pace of what happened in 96 and 97. So not only do we have a lot of immediate work right now, our crews are going to have a lot of work this spring as things keep going with that. So anyways, a bit of good news, but there's going to be some challenges ahead for all of us.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Onto I, onto nine, Mayor and Councilmember comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments this evening?
Just my condolences to Mr. Sandy's family and himself with the passing of his mother. So we're thinking about him.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. Ms. Osowski, any comments this evening?
I'll just ditto Danny.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Lonsky, comments? I think we got Mr. Kavami, you're still with us? Any comments this evening?
Yes, sir. No comments other than to just repeat what, what Danny had said and that you heard a lot about Ann, didn't know her personally, but appreciate everything she did for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Kavami. Mr. Vian, any comments this evening?
Yeah, I'd just follow up with, like others, the condolences to Dana Sandy and the family. I was able to work with, with Mr. Sandy and she was a great woman and I appreciated all of our, our work in the past and will miss her for what she's been done. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vian. Vice President Weber?
Sure. She was much too feisty to ask for a moment of silence. I don't think that's what she'd want. She'd want us talking about things. It, it gets a bit rough around here once in a while, but we're not having to do the work that council members had to do in 97 during the floods. So we're fortunate to have that flood protection system and to be looking at such a bright future for our city. And, and Ann Sandy helped to, to make that possible. So in memory of Ann Sandy. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. I, just a few comments, just, you know, I want to hope, hope that everyone had a good holidays, hope they were able to spend some time with family, hope we can look forward to 2023. I continue to pray for and hope for civility and decency, not just locally here in, in this chamber, but across the nation. I think the temperature needs to be dropped a little bit and conversations need to be had.